Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We start our meeting as usual with a prayer and a pledge. For those that would like to join in prayer, please bow your head. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity we have to serve our citizens. We ask you be with us as we deliberate tonight's city business. We ask you to be with all our city workers, our police, fire, and those that are out working there every day. We ask for your safety for them and for our citizens. We ask you to be with us. In your name we pray, amen. I pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Millen.
Here.
Councilmember Tibbs.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Clock.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant is excused.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Humphreys.
Here.
Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have eight members present, one excused.
All right, thank you. And for our audience, I'd like to remind you that this is a very good time to grab your cellphones and let's make sure that we have those turned down or turned off so that they do not interfere with the meeting tonight. Normally I announce that there's no cheering or booing or rude or obnoxious behavior, but we'll just go with the rude and obnoxious behavior if that's all right for tonight. So with that, Madam Clerk, you've got some information for us.
I do, I have a couple announcements. Want to remind everyone that City Hall will be closed Wednesday, July 4th, for the Independence Holiday. And due to the July 4th holiday, your trash and yard waste collection will be one day late if your regular collection day is Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. And Mayor, we have a proclamation recognizing Leslie Tinknell for his years of service on the Riverfront Development Commission.
Well, it's with the mixed emotions that I have Les come and stand up here to the podium for us, if you would, please. Come on up. Blessed is my honor to present to you this proclamation. And whereas the Saginaw City Council is proud to recognize Les Tinknell for 18 years of service as a valued member of the Riverfront Development Commission. Since the commission's inception in 2000, Mr. Tinknell has demonstrated his commitment to the citizens of Saginaw through his leadership and invaluable contributions to the Riverfront Commission. And whereas for more than five decades, Mr. Tinknell has been a pillar of our community and served the city in countless ways. After graduating from the University of Michigan with a Bachelor's of Architecture degree, Mr. Tinknell moved to Saginaw in 1958 and has been a community and business leader. He was one of the original members of the Riverfront Commission and is dedicated to preservation and new development of the riverfront. He was selected due to his knowledge of architecture and commitment to maintain the rich history of the Saginaw Riverfront. And whereas while serving as a Riverfront Commission, Mr. Tinknell has assisted in developing the Riverfront Master Plan as well as researching and establishing the original markers for the historic Saginaw lumber mills along the riverfront. Through his efforts, he has worked to preserve the dynamic urban pattern of Saginaw's past while encouraging new development along the riverfront area. And whereas the Riverfront Development Commission has benefited from Mr. Tinknell's dedication and vast knowledge of the Saginaw Riverfront area, he has served as chairman of the Saginaw Riverfront Development Commission as well as assisting with the development of Art and About in Saginaw, which brought the lifelike bronze sculptures to downtown Saginaw in 2016 and the David Zinn Sidewalk Art Project in 2017. And whereas Mr. Tinknell will be remembered for the time and effort that he has put forth on the Riverfront Commission, offering beneficial assistance to redevelop the riverfront area, citizens from across the region can now enjoy a more vibrant riverfront because of his hard work and dedication. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow council members and the citizens of this community, do hereby extend this appreciation, expression of our appreciation and gratitude to Les Tinknell for the positive impact he has made in our community over the past 18 years as a member and leader of the Riverfront Development Commission. We congratulate Mr. Tinknell and extend our very best wishes for continued success in all of his future endeavors. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 18th day of June in the year of our Lord, 2018. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor. Councilpersons Floyd Clock, Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Humphreys, John Millen, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, and Timothy Morales, our City Manager. Congratulations. And Les, I need you to, Les, Mr. Tinknell, would you remain at the podium for me for just a minute? At this time, I would like to ask the members of the Riverfront Commission up to present their special recognition.
I guess I'm the only one left. Carol was supposed to join me. Oh. City Councilmember also here. Les is, as you said, Les was a founding member of the Riverfront Commission. We brought up at the last meeting when they sent the letter, when Les said his letter and saying he was retiring, we said, well geez, we've got to have a proclamation and get him a little plaque. But we didn't want to get him that little brown plaque with a little copper plate on it. Les is a big art lover, as you know. He paints and does a lot of different artistic things. And there's a famous glass artist, Chahuli. And we wanted to get Les a Chahuli piece, but they're about $6,000. So, yeah, this is not a Chahuli, Les.
Got it.
But there is a, there is a group in East Jordan, East Jordan Glass Works that handblows glass vases and different pieces of art, so we wanted to present this to Les.
Thank you.
I got a box.
Any words you would like to share?
Anything now is a good time.
I just want to say I appreciate the privilege of being able to do what I've been able to do. And fine, I hope to be able to do more. And when he talks about the Art and About, please look for the painted pianos that are going to be located around the town. And if they would take one out of my garage, it's all ready to go, I'd really appreciate that.
Thank you, Les.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next order of business is a public hearing.
And I need to remind you that a public, the purpose of a public hearing is for the public to discuss, is to address council as a whole and for council to receive comments for consideration when action may be taken. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the hearing. Begin by stating your name. The main presenter or designated representative will be allowed 15 minutes. Other speakers will be limited to five. Speakers may ask general questions, but shall not ask questions of individual council members, city staff, or the audience, or, and the audience. And the public hearing is not a question and answer session. And tonight, we have a public hearing on the obsolete property rehabilitation certificate for 515 North Washington Avenue.
And I see Mr. Millen is always there.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, manager Morales. I'm Tom Miller with Saginaw Future. I'm going to save the obligatory Oprah comments that I give frequently when I'm up here since we've been doing so many lately. As you know, there's, the Oprah process is a two-step process. First is to establish the district and the second is to actually approve the application. That's what we're doing today. A little bit more about the project. Some of you that were on the tour probably remember when we drove by 515 North Washington Avenue, when I talked about the project. About a year ago, several members of the Unemployment Insurance Agency for the state of Michigan came before council and expressed their concern over the potential consolidation of offices around the state of Michigan. Now, there wasn't anything official, but the state had shuffled workers around in an effort to be more efficient with their, with their offices in the Unemployment Insurance Agency. The lease was terminating in Saginaw and there was, there was some thought that potentially that they would shift those workers to either Grand Rapids or Lansing. Again, there was nothing official, but the state did, the state had moved some workers in the past. Close to 100 people work in that office and pay income tax in the City of Saginaw. And so when we met with the City Manager and the developer regarding that project, we put into motion some processes to try and ensure that that office stayed in the City of Saginaw. And so sometimes I think council and the general public doesn't, don't get to see all of the work that goes into one of these projects that's simply an application that appears before you. But I can assure you that the manager led a group of individuals for over a year to meet and to talk about this project. Senator Horn and Representative Guerra were very helpful and instrumental in facilitating meetings with the state offices that make the decisions on where to locate these offices and what leases to sign. And so Joanne Crary, the President of Saginaw Future, and I, the City Manager in the chamber, along with our delegation, Senator Horn and Guerra, really expressed to those folks how important it was to keep that office in the City of Saginaw. Behind the scenes, the lease was terminating and so the state released an RFP. SSP and Associates or Shaheen Development responded to that RFP and luckily was able to secure that office. Now, they had to move from their offices on Washington, South Washington, to 515 North Washington because they had some additional requirements for their, for their operations. That precipitated the need for some significant upgrades to the 515 North Washington Avenue. And so that's why we're here before you tonight. It's a $2.5 million project roughly, a lot of upgrades and changes to the obsolete property at that address. And why it's so important for you to approve this exemption is to help to facilitate the retention of these 100 jobs, including their income tax, in the City of Saginaw. Gary Glazza from the company is here to tell you a little bit more about the project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, City Manager. It's a pleasure to be back. Doesn't seem like it was that long ago when I was here sharing a few tidbits of the project. Councilman Mill, I believe you were curious as to who the surprise or AAA class tenant was going to be. The secret's out. We now know that it's the state of Michigan. And I can assure you that the members of the Shaheen Development family are very excited to have been able to work in cooperation with all of the members of this community have helped save 100 jobs for the City of Saginaw. To lose that many jobs that are paying income tax to the city would be not devastating, but definitely not healthy for the city. To be able to get them into a building downtown, a building that has, for the past 15 years or so, not been fully occupied and will reach as a result of this new lease arrangement, full occupancy is very exciting. You can about imagine how exciting it is for the Shaheens to finally reach 100% occupancy in this building. As Mr. Miller has mentioned, the project is about a $2.5 million economic investment. It will, in essence, be pretty much a full replacement of much of the interior HVSE system. The windows will all be resealed so that we have a better quality environment for the building and the occupants. We will be resealing all of the exterior panels. The two elevators in the system will be upgraded so that they are representative of the first-class building and the first-class tenants that make up the facility. There will also be the full milling and resurfacing of the parking lot and many other things. It will look completely different when it's all said and done. And we're all going to be very proud that the City Council worked with the Shaheen family a number of years ago and put it into their portfolio. They are a very diligent group. They are very invested in the city. They believe very much in core urban redevelopment. And this is another class act that we're all participating in together. So it is truly my pleasure to represent them. As their CFO, I get to see the internal side of the transactions. Many of the rest of you in the room get to see the external impact of what they do. This is really a significant event. We look forward to a positive outcome from the City Council this evening. So thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak reference the obsolete property rehabilitation certificate at 515 North Washington? Second time anyone else to speak and third and final time anyone else to speak reference the obsolete rehabilitation certificate at 515 North Washington? Being none, I need a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing. But why?
It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion, council? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next order of business is personal appearances.
And as we begin tonight's business, we welcome your thoughts and input. If you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. To be helpful, let us know if you're speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points. Hearing from our citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. Finally, since we are speaking, you are speaking as a representative of all our citizens, we ask you to be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTB, and to this council so that we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to the city staff. Madam Clerk?
Speaker's Thomas Roy.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, city attorney, and city manager. My name is Thomas Roy and I'm from the Saginaw Area Fireworks. My home address is 4283 North Autumn Ridge Drive, Saginaw, Michigan 4603. I am here to represent Saginaw Area Fireworks. As you know, that July 4th is a great, great event for Saginaw. We usually never come here after the fireworks, so I'm not sure how many of you guys watched the fireworks last year, but I'm hoping you were quite entertained. It was, it was a great show. I think everything went perfect. It was flawless. I want to thank the Police Department, the City Manager for all the help that they do for us. Usually 125,000 people watch the fireworks and with that, we have a great show. And the big thing is money. Unfortunately, we're becoming a cashless society and many people don't have the cash to dig in the pockets and put in the buckets. And nobody really writes a check anymore. I know I don't write any checks hardly. And I do know that coming out this Thursday in the Saginaw News, we have our envelopes that we usually put in the Saginaw News every year that helps us raise a lot of money. I want to say, over the years, it's probably raised, on the average, at least $10,000 to $12,000 from the citizens of Saginaw and the surrounding areas. We have people that come from Detroit to watch the fireworks. We have people from Flint and even from Bay City. I believe that our fireworks are probably one of the best in the state. And I want to thank everyone that participates. That's about all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to ask, you know, answering. So, thank you for.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Debbie Melkonian.
Good evening. As you know, I've been on a big crusade to increase the number of people that attend neighborhood association meetings. Rachel Haska, who is now an intern in Tim Morales's office, has put together this, you should all have a copy of this flyer, and it lists the importance of neighborhoods and what they do, as well as the current names of all 14 neighborhood associations that currently are meeting, along with a contact number and a location of the meetings. As you know, Butmann Fish, as well as Northwest, have actually pulled out and several of those residents are attending the Adams Boulevard Neighborhood Association. Any resident can attend any association meeting. They do not have to live within the boundaries of, of their neighborhood, which is listed on this map, as you know, that's down in the hallway, or down in the lobby, rather. The next thing is having this wonderful new brochure. I got the idea to stuff them in the blue bags that we use for Light Up the City. This way, the residents that, within the, each walk, will get a copy of this. And working with Tim's office and with consumers, we got the okay. And as of this Wednesday, 200 copies of these will go in the 200 bags that they put together. Mr. Morales's office has agreed to print these in black and white for the remaining walks which go through, I believe, August 8th or 15th. So this will be a wonderful way to get the information out for anybody that wants to attend a meeting and then they'll know where it is, what time it meets, and who to contact. So I'm hoping this will make a big difference in the participation with neighborhood associations. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Angie Miller.
Good evening. My name is Angie Miller. I'm the President of the Mid-Michigan Area Labor Council with an office at 1614 Mershon here in Saginaw. I'm here tonight to talk to council and the residents of Saginaw about the great things that the unions are doing in our community. First, many of you may recall the National Association of Letter Carriers hosted their annual Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive last month. Our local letter carriers, along with the support of other unions, such as the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, the Communication Workers, the United Auto Workers, and other unions, along with the community, were able to collect 110,868 pounds of food to be distributed throughout Saginaw County. The locally collected food was given to Hidden Harvest, who provided the donations to food pantries through our, our community. The success and hard work of the letter carriers and their union brothers and sisters was only made possible because of the generous donations by those that live in our community. And I want to thank everyone who participated. Your generous contributions made a huge impact on those individuals who live in Saginaw County. Secondly, tomorrow, the United Way of Saginaw County, the United Way of Bay County, and the Mid-Michigan Area Labor Council are excited, excited to hold their final Union Community Action Network Class of the Year. Tomorrow's class will focus on veteran resources and programs. There will be representatives from the Bay County Soldiers Sailors Fund, the Veterans Affairs Homeless Veterans Program, and the Veterans Affairs Voluntary Service. Anyone who is a veteran or knows a veteran is welcome at this free event to find out what services exist locally to support those who serve their country. This class again will be tomorrow, which is June 19th. It'll run from 6:00 to 8:30 at the CWA Hall at 1614 Mershon in Saginaw. Pizza and beverages will be provided. Thank you for your time and I look forward to seeing the community tomorrow evening.
Mayor, we are at remarks of council.
Remind council, we're still on a five-minute limit and we begin tonight with Councilman Tibbs.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments. I guess I just wanted to say Happy Belated Father's Day to all the fathers out there. Just included biological, adopted mentors, such as Big Brother, Big Sister, Red Association of Saginaw. Just, you don't necessarily have to be a biological dad to be a dad to, to somebody. And I guess I was just encouraged about the number of social media messages I received over the weekend, just dads encouraging other dads to, to keep up the good job. And it just had me thinking of how impactful images are and how we see so many images about men who are supposed to be dads are not doing the right thing. But there are so many, so many dads that are doing the right thing. And I think they definitely outweigh those who are not. And I just wanted to encourage the city to keep encouraging the fathers. That will definitely help the city keep going in the right direction because you definitely need good dads to have a good city. I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Tinknell for, for his service. It had me thinking about all the other, what do you want to call it, projects that started from nothing and, and just had such an impact on the city, such as the neighborhood associations. And I was thinking about, it was not too long ago, Light Up the City, they didn't have any, any sponsors. It was just a group of local residents who wanted to take back their city and decided to walk through neighborhoods. But who would ever thought it would be what it is today? And, and we, we give a lot of credit and credit is, is due to the officers, police and Michigan State Police Department and Sheriff's Department. But I just think it's some of these, I guess, soft impactful events rather than just trying to muscle people to do the right thing. But such programs like Light Up the City and a neighborhood association is what the city needs to take it to, to the next level. But I just want to thank Mr. Tinknell and similar residents who have done so much for the city. Because I'm sure you never thought it would be where it is today and I just wanted to say thank you. That's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Debbie mentioned it and Councilman Tibbs has mentioned it, the Light Up the City. The first walk is this week, Wednesday, June 20th. And it's at the Arthur Eddy Academy and the sponsor is Saginaw Valley State University. And that begins at 5:30 PM with pizza and social hour and walk begins at 6:00. Hope to see a lot of people there. Just wanted to comment on something we get a lot of comments about here at council, condition of the roads and when are we going to work on them. We've completed two of the major milling and resurfacing projects already this summer and there are two or three being worked on this week. So by the end of this June, we will have done a major portion of this summer's resurfacing projects. And the big one has started over on Bay Road, which is the biggest traffic problem because that's going to last through September. But a lot of roadwork getting done this year. Keep an eye out for better streets in front of your properties. And I'm only going to mention a little about this because we had some other council people there, but last Friday was. there, but last Friday was the Fire Ops Day, and I wanted to thank Chief Van Lou and Lieutenants Pedinger, Brady and Foreman in particular, but all the firefighters who participated. We had two state officials attend this year, looking to the use of our program as a model to take this to other cities in the state of Michigan. So, this is a real good way to introduce legislative people. And I also wanted to thank, we had a county commissioner come this year, Michael Webster. And he enjoyed the program and hopes to get more of his commissioners in next year. And those are my comments for today.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody who attended, and the comments that we received from everyone tonight. Going to give a little shout-out to the Children's Zoo. I had the opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting for the new handicap accessible train cars. Truly, truly wonderful addition to the iconic train at the zoo. In addition to these handicap accessible train cars, they also were able to refurbish the train itself, acquire a second locomotive, and make all sorts of various improvements to the whole train line, thanks to the generosity of the community and the donations that have been received over the years. If you have not been to the zoo recently, strongly urge you to go. It is just this wonderful little gem here in the city of Saginaw. And if you have family members, friends, acquaintances with handicaps, it's pretty much a barrier-free facility now, and to be able to get on that train and ride around there is a wonderful addition. I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the contributions of the Zilee family. Lou Zilee was a fixture here in Saginaw for years, ran Covenant Hospital back when I think it was known as St. Luke's. And through the family and their generosity, that's part of why that handicap train came into existence. Last, I have to say congratulations. Unfortunately, as a member of the Riverfront Commission, I have to say, geez, I'm sorry to see you go, but I know that doesn't mean you really are going to be gone, because you are a perennial volunteer. You're involved in so many different things. I think if the mayor had had in his proclamation everything that you have done over the years, he'd still be reading it. And I also want to give a shout-out to the person sitting next to you, because she too, your wife Marion, has been an avid volunteer in this community. And I know that good men can only do good things, or good men do better things, let's put it that way, when they have good support with them. Marion, it's good to see you tonight, too. With that, I'll say thank you and pass it along.
I don't want to be done there, but I have to thank Mr. Tinknell, too, for all the work that you've done in the city of Saginaw. I'm sure everybody here appreciates all the work that you've done and what you'll do in the future, too, all your volunteer efforts. Everybody that volunteered in the city of Saginaw is just a great thing. This place definitely wouldn't be what it is without volunteers. The Neighborhood Association, the unions, collecting over 100,000 pounds of food to distribute to our community, you know, it's a beautiful thing. I even would like to report on a guy that just graduated from school, my little brother in the Big Brothers Program, 18-years-old. Thank God he graduated and on his way to Saginaw Valley University to study. I'd like to report, too, that he received a $500 scholarship from the Great Lake Looms. The Major League Baseball gave away 20 scholarships, and two of them went, one of them went to a kid from the Millin area, another one to our little brother here in Saginaw, $500. So, that's going to, sure, help them get at least one book when they go to school. But I'm sure that $500 will be well-spent anyway they get it. And I'd like to report, too, that he will be gainfully employed at the Wine and Gas Credit Union as a, at least 27 hours per week. And he'll probably be employed for four years while he's in college. So, it does work when you help our little kids and to our community, hopefully they will come back and support us. I'd like to thank the city manager for the report that he gave me about the amount of people that's paying taxes in the city of Saginaw. And I would like for you to explain something for me. I'm going to mention what I want you to explain, but 2016 tax return, is this saying that only 12,000 people paid taxes in the city of Saginaw? And 2017, the people filed taxes.
Those are the filings, yeah.
You know, we need to get more jobs in the city of Saginaw. We've only got 12,000 people that's filing taxes. I know there's probably a lot of retirees that don't have to file taxes, but we don't need to file taxes. But that means that we do need to bring more jobs to make this place prosper. I'd like to thank the Shaheen Development Company for bringing the jobs that they bring here in the city of Saginaw, too. Please take our comments back and tell them thank you for the work that they're doing in the city of Saginaw. You know, at least somebody trying to bring some jobs here to the city of Saginaw is a good thing. So, I mean, if our residents are working, that means we're getting more taxes for the city, and that means the guys are not going out there doing crimes, they got good-paying jobs. So, I think we all are part of that process and try to make it happen. So, I'd like to thank you for making those comments, sir.
Good evening. I'd like to thank our presenters. And you all know that you do so much, Angie, you forever, you forever in the trenches. You know what, Ms. Deb, I can't say enough. We can never say enough about you. The neighborhood groups, I truly hope that they come back, because they are starting to do it. I went to a couple of meetings and it was like spots. And I'm used to going, especially during campaign time, to a room full. So, I hope that it comes back. On last Wednesday, I had the opportunity to go to Light Up the City. It was fabulous. It was fabulous. I danced all night long. Anybody that knows me knows that's my trademark. And the hot dogs were great. Piggybacking off of what Councilman Mem said, it is important if we get out on this coming Wednesday, tomorrow, no, two days from now, and meet over at Arthur Eddy so that we can walk the neighborhoods. The more people walking, the more people wonder what we're doing, and especially because this year the shirts are lime green and baby blue. I had to see it to believe it, but it's a cute shirt. It's a cute shirt.
Okay.
It is cute. So, I think that the louder the shirt, the more people be wondering, what are all them people got them shirts on for, in little packs? So, I'm encouraging everybody to get out and come out and support for our young man who gave us 18 years of service. You've got 18 more years. 18 more years plus some more years. So, don't go home and sit down on this. Keep doing what you're doing, because some child is going to remember this day, that you were here and you did this and you did all this for our city. So, I say kudos for the young man from Shaheen. I met with you at the tour, and it was fabulous then. I was excited then, and I'm even more excited now, because I just thought Tom Miller was just talking, just talking like he's doing, just talking. But he wasn't just talking on the bus. It was true. So, my head goes off to Shaheen, and please tell Pete and Sam that we said thank you so much from the city of Saginaw. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, both. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. There's a lot that's been covered already, so I won't, I'll try not to go over it too much, but I do want to also mention the art, excuse me, the Light Up the City event on Wednesday, there were thousands of people. It was really, really a wonderful event. Also, well, that was Thursday, I got to keep my dates straight. We also had on Wednesday Art in the Garden, and we had Jazz and Jefferson. Again, two big events in the city of Saginaw with thousands of attendees. The Jazz and Jefferson was the biggest I've ever seen. It was tremendous. Saw a lot of people from the city, staff there, saw other council members, and tons of people from the community. It was wonderful. We also had the ribbon cutting. Mr. Humphries has mentioned that. He is correct. There was a ton of people that were mentioned as having contributed to that project. The Zilee family was one of them, but everything from the Saginaw Community Foundation through Mike's wrecker service. There were probably 20 different groups or businesses that had contributed to make that There's some other things I wanted to mention, such as, there is, I just got an email regarding the Saginaw Police Department Police Career Exposure, Career Exposure Academy, July 16th to 20th that's coming up. Chief, I think that's going to be a great, great event. There's applications available at the police department. There's an officer, Mr. Moore, Officer Moore, who's the contact person for that. Anybody here knows any students or any kids that are interested in checking out the police career? It's a great opportunity to learn about it. I do want to thank Mr. Manager, Mr. Morales, the, I had a couple of months or so ago requested information regarding the city vehicle replacement list, so that everyone on council could know, and the public, if there was those interested, the age and the past due replacement schedule for all our vehicles. And I did get it, but I wasn't able to mention it last time. I want to thank you for that. I would urge all council members to take a look at that, because it gives us a pretty good idea of how far behind we are in replacing our vehicles. These are our capital investment that we need to be able to do, and it's very hard to do for the lack of funds we have, but it's important to be aware of that. I also want to mention my thanks to Mr. Roy. As you know, and many people know, the fireworks are very dear to my heart. Most people don't have a clue what this committee does. Tom is one of them. It's a very dedicated group, and it's a working group that makes this possible for the city of Saginaw. Most of the people who attend don't even have a clue of what goes into creating the fireworks for the city. And to bring in 100, 125,000 people, that's a tremendous event. We all need to support it. If you haven't got your contributions in, I'm going to ask you all to do it, because it's worth it. And I do write a check, so you have one. The Saginaw Fire Department, Fire Ops, was interesting. Two of us from council attended. I know Councilwoman Moore attended last year and was there. She enjoyed the meal. Had the best spaghetti meal we're ever going to get there. It was really good. But we got to do things like ladder work, the jaws of life, the hydrant, and fire hose operation, a lot of activities to understand more about what the fire department does. So, I appreciate that and want to thank Chief Lou. What is underscored here, it's one more thing, the Great Merle Project. Many people may have not heard of that, but this is being actually supported by several groups, including the Land Bank, because they own one of the buildings downtown, and this is a project to put murals, painted murals, on the side of what people know as the painted nails, Lovely Nails Building. Which they are working to market, which I'm very happy to hear, and they are helping, along with a large group of volunteers, to spruce up that building. So, first of all, it's good to hear that they're doing something to make that building a viable option for the future, and they're also doing something to make it look better in the meantime. There are a group of people who are painting this project, or this mural. It's several panels that will be unveiled on July 13 downtown. So, if anyone's interested, please do that. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I don't want to repeat everything that's been said before, but Mr. and Mrs. Tinknell, thank you and congratulations for all the contributions that you've made through so many years. They're both two of the loveliest people, so it's very nice to see you guys here and be able to be here when we recognize all that you've done for the community. And to our public speakers, like Councilman Clock said, Mr. Roy, it's a huge undertaking, and it's not something that can be done without volunteers and people volunteering their cash, and it is one of the best shows. And I think the only complaint I ever hear is that they don't, you know, do it more than one night, which probably is a nightmare idea for those of you who are trying to do it, you know, just the one night. But it's definitely worth making the contribution and going down there and catching up with the community and seeing a beautiful show. And to Ms. Miller and of course, Ms. Malconian, the work that you guys do is so incredibly valuable and very much appreciated. So, thank you for being here to update us on all the good things that our local unions are doing, and thank you so much, Ms. Malconian, for all that you do. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, then, I'm just going to say thank you. I should cover it. But I would like to say special thanks to the rest, Tinknell and Marion. Special thanks to Mr. Roy and Deb and Angie. Thank you for coming each time, and I really appreciate everything everyone's doing. Thank you to council member, our Mayor Proton Floyd Clock, and Councilman John Milne for participating in the Fire Ops. Saw some nice pictures of you guys out there sweating it out. And I would have chose a much cooler day, but I can tell you it wasn't any cooler last year either, and so, good. You know, just a shout-out, yesterday being Father's Day, but not just to the fathers, but I really want to give a shout-out to all the mothers that have to be mothers and fathers both. There's many families where mom is both, and I give a shout-out to that, too, the double duty that a lot of them do, and just appreciate that so much. Exciting week this week, all council members. We have two ribbon-cutting ceremonies. We have one coming up Wednesday at the YMC Boys and Girls Club. That is happening Wednesday at 3:30 on the 20th. And then we also have the SVRC ribbon-cutting down there on the 22nd, Friday the 22nd at noon, and I'm hoping Mr. Miller's place will be open, but we'll just wait and see, because there is a lot to be done, a lot. But it's going to be exciting, very good for that coming up. Madam Clerk, are you all set on primary worker, primary workers for this coming primary in August? If anyone is still interested, please contact the clerk's office. If we can't use you in August, we certainly will use you at the next one, so I'll do that. I want to thank the staff members. I did get an email this weekend, and I responded by the email. It was concern of traffic on Bay Road, and I responded in general, all my response goes to our manager. And I just, I passed it on to him and did not anticipate an answer until Monday. But the answer came back on Saturday, along with several department heads. I thank you so much for that. I don't expect that to happen on weekends, but thank you anyways for that kind of response. You know, it's just, it's just, it's just really nice. If anyone is having problems in their areas, reference to traffic and so forth on any of our construction sites, I would like to recommend they call the city information number. If they would call that city information number, it's 399-1311, 399-1311. They will put you in contact with the appropriate people, that we can get somebody out there at least to take a look at it. Some of these places are, some of these projects are long-term, some are just a day, a couple days, and then it's over. So, I appreciate that, and we'd love to work. I'm excited about the Career Exposure Academy coming up with the police department next week. That's a terrific job. Thank you for those that attended the Light Up the City kickoff last week, and we've already talked about this week, going out to Arthur Eddy Academy and walking out there. And the last thing I had is, I felt really bad. I was out of the state last week, and I had the opportunity to meet on Sundays with Mr. Lou Zilee out to the Shattuck Manor's out there, and met with him, and about a month ago, he asked me to come to his room. He wanted to show me something. When I got there, he had this model of this railroad car. His son had this car made up. It's exact replica of the one that they helped with the foundations and the other ones over there, and he was looking so, he was really looking forward to being there, but Lou passed And he was looking so, he was really looking forward to being there, but Lou passed away about two weeks ago and didn't make it. This was in honor of his wife that they were doing that, and so, but what a contribution to the community, along with our, our foundations and all those others that have participated in that. That has been, that, that's really a neat thing now, that even those that aren't fortunate to walk like the rest of us and need some physical help, they can get that right there and ride that train. And, and it's also the same thing with the trolley, when, or not the trolley, the mayor go around with the seats and stuff that they have for handicaps. So those are all wonderful things. So with that, I think that's all my notes. So we're moving on.
Words from Manager.
All right. All right, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the comments about the responses, particularly department heads that deal with emergency services and public services. I know they're always checking their emails and their text messages, the police chief and the fire chief and Phil Carwatt. So we're used to that, so we'll continue to do that. Anything that has to do with streets or public safety, we usually, we usually get to pretty quickly. So thank you for your comments regarding that. I'll thank Les Tinknell as well for his service on the Riverfront Commission and his dedication, and also a number of the members on the Riverfront Commission that have continued to work on projects and find new ways to fund them since Les was on the, the commission since its inception. He knows along with some other members that that used to be pretty well-funded by the city 18 years ago, but now in the budget, it's usually about $4,000. So it's, it's been a pretty significant decrease. I think it was well over $50,000 at one time. So they've been able to do fundraising to support a lot of those projects. So we thank Les for his work on that. And Les, as mentioned, as the mayor mentioned in the proclamation, he dedicates his time to a lot of projects in the city, so we thank him. And so do a number of other people. Mentioned the Shaheens, the work that they do for different projects and as well as fundraising and philanthropy in the city, as well as Mayor mentioned, the ribbon cutting at the Boys and Girls Club. We know that Herb Spence was very much involved in that project. So a number of our business leaders that, that work on these charitable organizations and projects in the city, we thank them all. And that, that ribbon cutting the mayor mentioned is Wednesday at 3:30. There is another ribbon cutting Friday at noon, SVRC Marketplace. And also next week, Monday the 25th at 9:30 Covenant Hospital, the new operating, hybrid operating suite, there is a ribbon cutting there. Mr. Spence did want to make sure that, that city staff, particularly John Stempel and Phil Carwatt, would be at the ribbon cutting because they helped out quite a bit in putting together development agreement for the Boys and Girls Club to utilize that building. If you recall, it was the Junior Achievement was in the building previously. It's a little bit different setup. The city owned the building, had a lease with Junior Achievement. We, we didn't have much of a use for the building, so it was great that the Boys and Girls Club could take that over. So if you're available to attend that, I think that'll be a great event as well. I would also congratulate Brian Weiss, who you saw at the budget presentations. Brian graduated this past week from Leadership Saginaw County Program Class of 2018. So if you have a chance to see him or want to pass something along through Yolanda, congratulations to Brian for that. And a few council members mentioned the road work, and again, I thank our staff for that work. We are doing a lot of that work in-house, and seems like there's a lot going on now, no matter where you turn in the city, but I think they're doing a really good job doing a lot of that in-house and combining that with what they're doing with contractors to get the most we can out of the dollars we have. So congratulations to them. And that's, that's a good team effort between Phil Carwatt and Beth London, who's here today, and Simeon Martin, who's over the Streets Division. So they've come up with a lot of good plans, so appreciate their work as well. We do have coming up too tomorrow, the NAG meeting, which is hosted by John Stempel here in, in council chambers at noon. And they have a presentation by Next Gen American, is also zoning relating to signs and then as well as the regular police and fire updates. And Thursday, June 28th, 5:30 to 7 is the Citywide Neighborhood Police Chiefs Meeting. And this month, it's hosted by Houghton Jones Neighborhood Association at the Resource Center, 1708 Johnson Street. And Randy Fow is going to be presenting at that meeting as well. And before Randy comes up for his presentation, I just also wanted to mention, we had some questions at the last meeting about the county parks system. So we did reach out to Brian Luckell, the Director of Saginaw County Parks, and he's going to be presenting an update at an upcoming meeting as well. With that, Randy, we asked Randy to do an update requested by Councilman Moore some time ago, so I think he had a few projects that he wanted to get ahead on. Randy, I think, is doing a great job with Central Dispatch, and of course, we have a few members of, of council and the fire chief that sit on the board. And with that, I'll ask Randy to come up and give his update.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, council members, and City Attorney. I'd like to start my presentation this evening with a little history behind Saginaw County 911. It was established in the basement of City Hall in 1977, and then moved to 618 Cass Street on the second floor of the Sheriff's Office in 1995, where we still operate. And Saginaw County 911 employs 30 operators when we are fully staffed, and five supervisors and one executive assistant. Saginaw County consists of 810 square miles, and Saginaw County 911 dispatches for 22 fire departments and 17 police agencies. There are approximately 200,000 people that reside in Saginaw County. On an average, we take approximately 1,000 calls a day and 350,000 calls a year. That volume puts Saginaw in the top 10 call volume of call centers in the state of Michigan. And when we have what I refer to as a weather event, we'll see an additional, like most recently, we've seen a couple of Fridays ago where we had severe wind, we'll double that. We'll see approximately 2,000 calls in 24 hours timeframe. Saginaw City stats for 2017 for the police, Saginaw County 911 had 49,352 calls for service in the city of Saginaw. Last year, that's, that's an increase from the previous year of 1,326 calls for fire calls. And 911 dispatched 3,439 calls of service for fire with an increase of 214 calls from 2016. Revenue. In 1992, then Senator, State Senator John Siskie created an inter-local agreement, and Saginaw County decided to have a surcharge to support Saginaw County 911 authority. Today, the current surcharge is 265 per 911-capable devices. The surcharge is the only revenue we receive to operate with. The revenue raised from that surcharge is inadequate for continued operations and capital replacement at 911. Millage. The recommended millage rate that Saginaw County 911 is going for on August 7th is 0.280. Is expected to generate 1.3 million dollars in the first year. The proposed millage would be for a period of 10 years. These funds would be utilized for the replacement of vital communications equipment for public safety responders, to include local police, fire, and medical personnel. In addition to the radio equipment on the street, we will also need to refresh aging backend equipment that will allow for more secure communications between 911 and the dispatch field and our personnel on the streets. This millage will also help fund the replacement of end-of-life 911 telephone system and backbone equipment that is now, that has been outdated. The update of this system will allow Saginaw County 911 to evolve into a true next-generation 911-capable communication center by opening the door for text to 911. We currently do not have the technology for text to 911, and that's extremely critical for not only our youth that we see texting all the time, but also events that's occurring across our nation where people can't speak on the phone. They can communicate text to include our deaf and blind community. I'd recently attended a meeting where there was representatives talking about the importance and the ability to communicate, to having that freedom to communicate with 911 and not a third party. So that's extremely critical and important to them. Community support. I would like to thank Chief Van Lu and Chief Bob Ruth for their level of dedication and commitment to the citizens of Saginaw City. We meet regularly to review efficiencies and response times for the best approach of serving our citizens, to include John Stempel from SCENIC and his, his efforts that he brings to keep Saginaw a nicer place to live. And that's my presentation. Any questions, please?
Questions of our Director?
Nice job.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Fow. I appreciate it. Um, anybody?
Yes, sir.
Phone bills, correct?
Yes, any device that's capable to call 911, so a landline and a cellphone, it gets charged 265. There's a cap in the state of Michigan of $3.
All right. This tax, now would that be in addition, or would it replace the surcharge?
The surcharge will remain in place.
All right. So the advantage is you're now taxing all the properties that benefit. All the properties for which you may have to make services or provide services, they're now being, would pay a tax?
Yes.
Okay. And not just the phones, but the, the service area?
Correct.
And this is county-wide?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Nothing further. Thank you.
What is the duration of the proposed millage?
It's 10-year millage, sir.
10-year. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Every question, I guess I just wanted to share my personal contact with 911 as a prosecutor of, you know, they're very involved in our crime fighting process, always on time as far as court dates, as far as testifying. They set the scene often in a lot of the calls, very professional as far as just doing what they have to do to, to, to keep our officers safe. They ask very pertinent questions as far as are there any weapons involved? Who are we looking for? Just everything you may need so our officers can be safe as well as for the prosecutor to present an effective case to our jurors. So just from a personal, personal perspective, 911 is crucial to our crime fighting and crucial to our, to our safety in our city.
Services, when we were doing the firefighter ops on Friday, we had the opportunity to learn or to experience when a fire unit goes out of operate, goes off, offline or out of duty, off-duty, I think is the right word for it?
Yes, sir.
In fact, while we were doing the training, they were not available directly for a fire, a fire call, so 911 got the dispatch to notify other departments. So you do more than just emergency calls and more than just police and fi, police work, but you also do the dispatch notices for all the out-of-service units, all the kind of, why don't you explain a little bit more about that?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. And we do, not only the communication between police and fire, the checking in service, that unit's going to be tied up, especially here in the city of Saginaw with the landscape that we have and knowing just recently we had to, working closely with Chief Van Lu with the closure of the railroad crossing on M13, we have, there's a lot of preparation and planning that goes into that involvement. And we have to look at not only how we're going to get that apparatus and those firefighters to that because of that obstruction, that constant collaboration of identifying what we need to work on, what's important today. I'm also a member of the Saginaw County Emergency Preparedness Council, and that's extremely critical and important to our infrastructure and our support here, and we all collaborate and work closely. To include, Central Dispatch is the operator, so to speak, for the police and fire. If they need assistance for communicating with consumers' power, whether it be gas, a power line down, we communicate with the roads department a lot here in this city to include the Department of Transportation, the county roads, and a lot of the wrecker services, the animal control. It's just a constant accumulation of communication to all of our end-users and who we can help and work with.
And so, that's why it was so important, because for the last six months, Mayor, we've been talking about this, and it's been a scary situation for us in that meeting. And so that's why I was so assisting about you coming, so that the community can know where we are. You gave us a story one time about a young lady who saved a life, because everything was all scrambled up, but she kept a level head, and she got help for the individuals. So I just want to thank you for coming and at least explaining to us what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Randy, we already have a, a millage that we've had in, over the past several years, I mean, for, for 911.
Surcharge.
The surcharge. This is the first time that a millage is actually being then offered or being asked for.
Most recently now, yes. There was millages prior to the surcharge taking effect.
Yes. Okay. Just want to clarify that. And just the, the last, just acknowledge that your, your dispatcher's there. I, I have an opportunity to teach many classes for the American Red Cross, and, and I tell them every time, you, you've got to call 911. Not only are you going to help, have help on the way, but you've got a trained person on the other end of that line that can walk you through a lot of medical emergencies and, and just even calming parents down and getting them to do the things necessary to sustain a, a life, and, and it's, it's amazing. So there, it, it's just, it's just not answering the call and sending out a, a vehicle or response. It's a lot more to that. So we appreciate that very much. Any other questions, council members? Be none. Randy, we want to thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you, Director Fow, and I think, again, Randy's doing a really good job, and they have, they have a lot of new things to deal with at, at 911 or Central Dispatch. If you think about the way technology's changing, that impacts our revenue. There are less phones, and sometimes cell phones are not from this area. People have, move up here, keep different cell phones, and that money goes to a different jurisdiction then, but their 911 call will go to Central Dispatch here in Saginaw. So I think there's a lot of considerations there with how it's, it's being funded, and the leadership there is, is looking at how do they move forward in that, and how do they provide services for text to 911 and other services? So I think it's, they're doing a good job of thinking ahead. And with that, that concludes the management update.
Question?
Yeah. I wanted to explain just the community patterns and local income tax a little bit.
The community patterns, and that will... Get an explanation from Lupki and Associates, because I did get an email from Councilman Milne as well. It doesn't necessarily match up to the, the tax returns, but I would assume that what Lupki and Associates did is, is just estimates. The tax returns are what we're really seeing come in. So what we plan to do with, with the economic development strategy is probably bring back Diane Lupki and her staff sometime where we can do kind of an in-service type half-day training and do updates with that, so we can go in a little bit more in-depth than what we had here. So that'd be a good opportunity to talk to them about that. I mean, they, I don't think they looked at a lot of our data to get though, so they, those are probably pretty rough estimates, I would guess. For the tax returns, I think, you know, we keep in mind that some of those are probably joint filings, so the numbers of, don't necessarily correlate to the number of people working. You might file it with your wife, so that's actually two, two jobs there, so. But we could also get you the, the data with the income tax paid, if that's something you're interested, related to residents and non-residents. I think we've done that in the past, so we can... I think we've done that in the past, so we can provide you that as well. Yep?
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city's website and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions. It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Are there any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, your next order of business is reports from boards and commissions and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Is there any councilmember that has a board they serve on or commission they would like to verbally give a report? If not, there is three mayoral reappointments that is listed for you there. Like to have a motion to accept all three?
Move to approve the mayoral appointments?
Been moved, is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Next order of business is resolutions. We do have one tonight. It's authorizing an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate at 515 North Washington Avenue.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Your motion's a miscellaneous business.
Each question of the man?
I was so close.
You mentioned the cover?
Ribbon cutting? I did not catch what that was or when it was. If I could, you could repeat that.
Monday at 9:30 a.m. and June 25th. It's a ribbon cutting for a new hybrid operating suite and home of the Artis Vino Robotics Seat Arm Angiography System used for minimally invasive interventional procedures.
Just send something out. It'll be appreciated, but that's what I needed. Thank you. Can you spell that for me?
It'll be in the email.
Cooper. Okay. I can do Cooper, that's not a problem. Okay. Any other, anything else? Anything else? I have a motion to adjourn, and I have a support. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, we adjourn.